American Rescue Plan Act Funds. So, we've all talked about the plan that has to be established. Still trying to figure out exactly how detailed that plan has to be. I received an email today from an engineering firm that said, basically if they're going to accept the money as revenue replacement, that's the plan itself. I don't think you have to go any further as percentages and dollar amounts or anything like that. So I really want to check into that, but I was told today that if you accept it as revenue replacement because of that number, that threshold was set, that's your plan.
It'd be that simple.
But then it is limited to use as revenue replacement and use within your general, within your general fund.
But I don't think that keeps it out of utilities and stuff. I think that allows, I think it allows for any government services, right?
Yeah, but one.
Under revenue replacement. So I think there's a little clarification there, but I think the good thing was we did. I mean, obviously, planning is the best thing. So I thank the department heads for coming up with a wish list and some items and some projects they would like to see done. So I would love for you guys to take those and look at those and see, kind of, set some priorities for a lot of those projects.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Are there anything in these wish lists that are like emergencies or something that should be addressed or is going to have to be addressed? Or are we going to have?
One of the things-
Something you as mayor would like to prioritize?
The department head would say, well, this thing has to be replaced or-
I was really going to blow up.
I guess my time's up.
No, there is, there is one thing that we, you know, Jeremy's been putting a lot of effort into sanitation. We know that we're still working in the dark ages with the way we pick up sanitation. Many communities are using the robotic arms and it's safer way of doing it. It's a lot cleaner way with the cans at the houses. So I think, you know, Jeremy on his wish list was putting some money towards sanitation. We're going to need a couple trucks, cans for all across the community. So I think, I think, well, here's one of the issues. Interest rates are flying up right now, daily. And if we're going to finance some of this, we need to make a decision soon here who we're going to go with. I think he's gotten three, three different quotes for financing.
We got three different quotes and just from a month ago, it went up a whole percentage point, so. And the one bank would like their response by tomorrow, and they are the lower bank. So I don't know if you guys want to lease the sanitation equipment or if that's your thinking? Or are we waiting any longer? I don't know if it's possible.
If we leased it.
I just did a five-year lease. I didn't, I mean-
You mean finance, not lease, right?
No, it's lease.
Oh, you're talking leasing?
Well, it's a finance company for-
It's a finance.
But they call it lease payment.
Okay, okay, okay.
What it is Tyler, is it's set up for basically a one-year, a year, basically like a five-year period.
Which allows us to keep.
And can we say we want to move forward with that plan and then work out the details in other words to get these? We, we can. What we need to, what you guys basically need to do is get your plan out. There is needs with, obviously, we're going through some growing pains. We're making up some additional housing, the new housing and such. Our equipment is getting really, really poor. You know, we've had to basically take two trucks out of service here recently. And the recycle drop offs really getting hit hard and it's really being affected, so. It's probably more of the recycle drop off being addressed first. One of the forefront items and then obviously continuing on mid-summer of taking care of that issue.
Yeah, I mean, I was out there Sunday and everything was full. I mean, pretty much that recycle drop off gets used quite a bit. And so I think what he's asking, there's a piece of it that is the trailers, the dump, the dump.
We lumped it all together.
Yeah. But so I think, no matter how you look at this, you know, we have this fee for the whole thing altogether. I would love to look at where we can finance so much of it. Maybe take some of our refunds and pay some of it down. But find a finance number that makes sense that maybe our user rates go up a little bit, but doesn't, don't go up a ton. If we paid for it over seven years and our user, you know, our rates go up four bucks, you know? It makes sense because it's going to be paid for over the next seven years. He's not going to be able to find enough in his budget to pay for it all.
We're going to have to tap into some of this.
Right, right.
And basically the biggest thing at this point is just locking your interest rate in. We did not lock the rate in until you guys give the approval to maybe not a set amount at this point. I think you guys all know what the amounts are, what's the range of it. But actually get, secure the interest rate. So in another two weeks, we're not at a point again. At some point, we're probably going to get ourselves out of, you know, being worthy or in a path of past more rate increase on an older consumer.
And the one that had the lowest quote for the rate, they would need something in writing by April 7th toward the transaction. But the price, or the rate is good until June 3rd, so.
And what about the local, the local one? What, they want to know soon, sooner?
I don't, I don't know. You guys don't-
No, I think they're on 45 days. But it's just that we'll take higher. It's not, it's not a lot, but it is a little bit higher. The locals on 45.
The fight, or it's good for 45 days?
Forty-five days.
Do they need anything in writing? No.
I don't believe, believe we just need to fill out the application at some point to lock the rate in.
For those of you new in the public, what Jeremy's talking about is we have some trash trucks that are worn out. And he's trying to fix the problem before we turn into a situation like Fort Wayne has, so.
He's doing a great job. Even though they-
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
For a local resident, you name trash, are we having our own trash cans then?
We're trying to-
Part of the path, we're trying.
Project.
We're going to purchase them.
Open to have-
We have our own that we got now, so we didn't know if that was, if we had to go out and buy-
No, we're hoping to get everybody a can and a recycle-
We're hoping, we're hoping to get trash can and recycle-
So then when you go down the street.
They're all the same.
Mm-hmm.
They're, they're all the same and these cans are, they're in the morning for ten to twelve years. So if you drive over or we drive over or whatever, call the company and basically it works this amount, basically.
It's just, you know, yup. It's going to be safer for our workers. We have people with shoulder injuries, with getting stabbed by needles. We have all kinds of things that we would like to stop. It's also going to, I mean, it would beautify the area not having bags and carpet and things laying all over the place where it's just going to be nice cans with the logo on them, so.
But everything has to fit in the can.
Right. And we hope, we hope that it makes more people recycle.
It does reduce a little bit off the truck, but it's a little expensive. I just asked if anybody was going to be out of work because you're being replaced by a truck.
Oh, no.
I didn't think so, but-
That's not the intention.
Nope.
You're looking, you would be amazed. Just for people who don't really like my trash. That we should never be in coming around that way. So it's a 100% employee safety concern.
Yup.
Somebody uses the drop off religiously, concerned too, I mean, as much care we could.
We were all out there last week looking at it, coming up with some plans.
It's just, we're going through some rough times.
So, so I guess where we need to go? Do we need to figure out a amount that we're willing to spend out of our refunds to lower? It's up to you, I mean, you guys.
I'll need to know so I can tell you just how much rate for the rate I want to go with them, not by the seven, so.
I mean, the overall.
And I don't know if you, yeah, because I don't know if the rate changes if we go just the equipment, finance, just the-
I'd like to lock in that rate for, it's only going up.
I'll tell you guys.
And Matt, that is like, yeah.
Out the small details, big portion of-
I just did a five-year, but I can ask for, but I think it goes up. Um, we all did the same dollar amount. But this is for five, five and seven. This one was five, seven and 10. But it goes up. And then I just did a five-year and this is what Indiana Bond Bank, which has a 10%.
What would be the amount for the, would you only be talking about the first year payment at the moment, right? A lot of that rate.
Well, I think we need to know how much we're, what we want to finance and what we'd want to take out of, say, ORP funds or some funds. We obviously can't pay for the whole thing right now, so.
Or how could our funds pay the yearly rate, lease amount? Or at least a portion of them?
I don't believe it can be used for debt service.
Probably right.
You're right, you can't.
Yeah, because that would be, that would be paying a bad service, right?
You're right.
Yup.
But you could use general funds and apply what would have otherwise gone to that debt service to a different use. So. You'd use it a certain number of ways.
Yup.
What's your recommendation, Mayor?
Yeah, I guess I kind of want to see what the exact total is, what a certain amount would be and what that finance rate, that debt service payment would be split up amongst all users and what that rate increase would be.
So what kind of motion do we need to make tonight to make all that?
I know, I know.
Because we all want it to move forward.
Right, right. What will, what will they need to know by tomorrow for a lock-in? Do they need to know the total amount financed?
They just want to know if they're awarded. At least Indiana Bond Bank did.
If they're awarded, if they gave them a, basically a high number, they're basically interested all the-
Right.
Now, it's, I would think it would be possible to go back to them and say, you know, we're not going to exceed this amount. At least get the paperwork, the application stuff filled out. Maybe I'm wrong, but.
Is there, do you have an anticipated amount within your budget that would go, that would have otherwise gone towards maintenance repairs of existing trucks or things that you could, say, here's our quote and I know that we, within our budget, would have this amount available, make like a down payment and we would anticipate financing this amount. That's what you're talking about, going back to them? The number you're going back to them with for financing?
We, we gave a total amount for the, you know, a high amount of what we were going to potentially try to finance. I don't know if they're totally settled on that because, you know, like Dan and I had the conversation with the local, you know, they were wanting us to shoot high in case we had other needs or-
Can we set a high amount and say, up, finance up to this amount? And then if we decide to pay some of it as sanitation, we can adjust that internally.
Right.
That's what I would-
That's what I would think. Set a high number and then we decide what we want to pay down some of it.
Pay into it.
Just to be able to get your application filled out and get your-
And lock the rate.
So I guess basically just tonight, we need to decide.
I'll make a motion for Jeremy to move forward with the application. If we can set it up as a not to exceed amount and then we'll discuss. Don't lock the number in, but if you can lock the rate in.
Are you guys okay with the amount that we advertise or that we show?
Yes.
I'll second your motion.
Are we selecting?
I want you to repeat your-
We're just making a motion to see if he can lock the rate in at the amount shown.
With Indiana Bond Bank?
With Indiana Bond Bank. Handing final amount approval by the city council. If you could bring us some numbers next week, Jeremy, on what the rates might have to be.
What are the rates?
Yeah, I think we have that all pretty well.
I know, I don't either.
What's that?
Right, we have all that pretty well out of town. I can send you some options.
The rates have changed. He got new rates today.
There's a whole ordinance will have to be-
Do we know what the rates were for the bond bank for the merchants today?
No.
And what was the bond bank? Oh, so it was a quarter. It was a quarter less. Okay, so we have a motion to second. Is there any more second? Okay. All ready?
I-
Put the same sign?
I'm sorry, fellas, it was widely seconded.
Okay, and then, just out of all the other department heads, I think I just hung them high and dry there. Matt basically asked us, I mean, that's, has to happen, emergency right now. And because of the rate, interest rates and because of the trucks, that we have to pretty much, or, I mean, let them know because they're coming off the line soon and that's it and they're gone. That was where that's at. How do you guys want to go forward with the rest of the departments and their wish lists? Do you guys want to look at them some more?
I looked at them, I just still, I was just wondering if there was something like that needs to be addressed or these are all things that you would budget over time, but if there's money, you could do it now? Or like, do we need to set aside money to buy those houses over there? It seems like something or, you know, or for the CSO plan or? There's all kinds of things on here that I don't know if they need to be done or they just be nice.
They would do it now if they had the money. Or they would budget it over the next year.
There's more, you don't need to go for the raw projects that are not necessarily planned yet and they're all projects that would be, will be done.
Keith, Jeff, on?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, where does the city government stand on the timeline to a housing study?
So, um-
As far as-
Yes, so I'm on the, I'm on the economic development board. The cities have, let's see, I'll say. We're working with the city and working with the county to try to do a housing study. We have a firm selected. I know that Economic Development has reached out to some private business, businesses to buy in and a couple have done it so far. So we're really close to securing the money to pay for a housing study.
It's not a study, the study's been done.
What's that?
What's the timeline on that study?
Um, oh, to do the study? I'm not sure how, what, how long the study will take.
If the business program is concerned about, you know, the increase in business is one of the common.
I, I agree. I 100% agree. And, believe me, and I've talked to builders right now and with the price of the materials, it doesn't make sense for them to build houses that aren't sold, that are sitting on a lot of money. The housing study is something that needs done because what do we need? What size, what price range apartments, what do we need? And that's what this study will do. So it is, economic development is pushing hard for this to happen. We just need community-wide buy-in. For most of us, it is. It is, it really is.
Les? Like, like Kevin said, if we were to identify the projects we have on that list, those are large enough that they would have to go and load it, so load it, budget it and go in. Probably priority one, two, and next one, and the next one. Because they're the projects that are too, are really too large for the general budget, the general budget to support. So those will eventually be public safety load. So, and that's just a five-year plan. You know, we have a 20-year-old engine again and a 25-year-old, 25-year-old ladder gun. So, you know, add a million to what we gave for the 97 ladder. Add 580 and some change, new ladders, about $105 million. So we've got some big-ticket things that are in our tenure plan. Knocking a couple of these out would allow us to not have to budget those and load it and save that balance towards that big truck, ten years.
Right, and that, you know, here lies the problem. I'm sure water and sewer will tell you the same thing. Make 1.5 million would just scratch the surface on what they need to do.
No.
Barely scratched the surface, yeah.
One, one item that I had written down is the completion of streetscapes that we can get between Monroe and Jackson here on Second completed. I think that's important for that entire project. And that we use a portion of this money towards that project. I would button up that project.
Yeah.
Currently, we could do it that way, we need to finish the other.
Yeah, and I mean, there was problems early this morning with underground utilities there today. So again, it's another message of getting it-
Is there a portion of this that could be prioritized to our not-finished park project?
Yeah, I think, you know, Larry, I think Larry can tell you. I think he's obviously working on fundraising right now for the park. I think there's what, a little over a million dollars of things that are unfunded. So, yeah, I mean, there's a lot, lot could be done out there too. Jeremy, do you have, do you have any estimates for going north on Second Street from Monroe to Jackson?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have it right off the top of my head, but I do have it.
If you get a chance, will you send that to council?
Submitted it when the year's budget was there. The numbers didn't work out, tracking didn't work out.
Right.
They did not get to the business.
Right.
Yeah. So, but this would help make that happen. Because that section is always treated like the stepchild. Yup, I know it.
If you don't mind, grab some numbers and throw them at these guys. So I think between now and the next main, let's take a deeper dive into these numbers. Department heads, reach out with, I know you guys have sent out wish lists, which is great. I appreciate you guys putting that in. But if there's something that, like they said, if there's something pressing that you're saying, you know what, this one really needs to get done this year, go ahead and put an exclamation point with it.
Is there anything that you wanted to see the city do that we don't have the time or the funds to do because we've been taking care of finishing other things that we could look at?
There's all kinds of things. I would love to see more trails. We're going to get this dog park done. It's going to, that'll be more of a fundraising effort, but that's going to happen.
There's a couple of those we could, see if we could work those in as the community development.
Okay, so I get my own wish list?
Yup.
Okay.
It's just like Christmas.
All right. Okay, so we'll work more on that. Do you have something under item? Uh, Jeremy, a thank you to our, our crews. I don't know how many people know that we had a main break at 2:30 in the morning last night and a lot of these guys were out there all night and all day. So thanks for getting on that and getting that fixed. Anything from you, Jeremy?
Um, heavy trash this week, just as a reminder. Uh, but it hasn't been too terribly bad. It's a little, a little on the light side, hopefully stays out of line, like in modern, I should say. Uh, get them doing next week. The solid waste district will be sending a brush drainer in to the Compost Site to Grand Epic Mountain Brush. Once they get done and not until they're completed, we'll do some safety concerns with welding, load mulch like we have been in the past. The Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, it's scheduled. I would be in media if I could, when that time comes. My dad says, 2:30 this morning, Bill Carpenter was on the call and he had to call this major leak out here. Really grateful for the guys and everything that we got together. We're still able to fix that and to pick up heavy trash on Friday, so.
Right.
That was a great thing, so. A lot of things coming, you know, Hannah Nutman or the Rink Sports Complex will open up. They're practicing now, they will not, uh, have a-
May 7th.
May 7th will be a good day for boys and girls. It's a warm temperature, we've been working out there on the warmer and dryer days. Ryan's been out there doing some, some housekeeping items and stuff, so. We're going to Medicaid, stuff like that. So there, there's a lot of things that we're working to get finished. There's been a lot of things over the last two, three years that we've not been able to get finished. Then it's the whole of trash, things button up this year, so. Appreciate you guys' support and look forward to talking at the export works meeting on the sanitation, trash setup and what we need to do for the fall.
Okay, thank you. One, one quick thing. We've had some calls about grass, groupings, leaf, what's-
Not made it to that point yet.
Okay.
It gets coming.
Okay, get through heavy trash and then figure it out.
Get through the trash, see where we're at.
Okay, okay, thanks. Uh, Larry?
Uh, today Walmart donated a 70-inch flat screen TV for Officer Trent Bussie for his office at the school to monitor the security cameras out there, so I could thank Walmart for that.
Oh, good deal.
I was just looking for a discount, but they ended up picking up the whole tab, so I very appreciate that. Uh, this Saturday, from 10 to 1 at the P E, Sergeant Rumshlog and Amy Gage will be conducting car seat checks. It's been a long time coming, so I think we'll have a good turnout. People have been asking since the pandemic's kind of weaning down, so they decided to do one this Saturday. So we'll advertise it on our Facebook page and Twitter and I gave some to local media, so.
Okay, good deal. Josh?
I'm good.
Brad? Kevin?
Uh, no, any council members have questions about your ORP fund wish list?
Les?
You know, Kevin, if you have questions.
All right, Jamie? Kurt?
Good.
Jeff?
We're good.
Tony?
Yeah.
Kerry?
I think I just started staring for fun back with you. So April 4th, start a disinfection season out of the waste waste plant. We have 72 vaults around the clock. You be home disinfecting every gallon of water at least. For the end of October.
Yeah. Bill? I feel your time is a bit bad, huh? Okay. I'm on council, anything else?
Public?
Phil's? Yeah? You're in the public. Anything else?
As you might have seen in the paper, I did fulfill my obligation with my matching money for the rest project.
Thank you for that, Larry.
I had over $10,000 that was donated by other people, so I have taken care of my obligations. I don't want you sending me to jail, thinking I did do what I said.
You have about four more days, so thank you. Thanks, Larry.
If you were going out to collection, that's the next part of our meeting.
Can I put a fund in for our St. Joe eighth graders? We're getting ready to Washington DC and two days ago, we found out that we don't have enough money for our kids to go. So on Sunday at St. Joe parking lot, we are having a fundraiser. A quarter for Nelson and Chicken. We have flyers up around town. I was going to bring one, but we ran out for you guys tonight. So any other part that you can get started at St. Joe so they can go to Washington DC is very appreciative. I can try to get you a flyer.
Sunday at what time?
Um, we start serving at nine and goes nine to two.
And there's no, no tickets, just show up?
Yeah, we couldn't reach L, so we're just flying to the community of $1,000. And I need you to fly, they're making more tomorrow.
How much is it?
Sunday.
And that's a great trip. I went on that trip and it's a wonderful trip.
Forty kids are looking forward to it if we can just get this last push in to them and it's Sunday, April 10th at St. Joe parking.
Okay, what, what time?
We're about $7,000 short.
What, what time was it?
Nine to two.
How much, how much you say you were short?
About $7,000. We got 42 kids going and we, we, we approximate at 32,000. But then as of pandemic, we gotta do two fundraiser and then installation with that. So now it's gonna cost us almost 38,000 for 42 of them. As parents are gone, they already paid almost a thousand dollars up each to go. We're just trying to fundraise our kids so our kids don't have to come up with a thousand dollars. It's $927 a kid. So.
And the normal fundraisers they do didn't all get to happen because of COVID.
The pandemic. So I told ladies that were doing this, I had come to bring a few girls for Friday and I was supposed to bring flyers, but we ran out. So anything for the community to help us on Sunday, the kids would really, really appreciate it.
Yup. And I don't want to, I don't want to see those parents go without the kids, cause you need the enjoyment of that bus for the kids. Believe me, you do. Well, you said the parents were paid for, so. All right.
So if you have support for me, I would really appreciate it on Sunday.
Okay, a, anyone else?
I'm like, I'm having chicken on Sunday.
All right, thank you.
Motion to pay the claim?
A second. Motion second, all favor?
Aye.
Pull the same sign?
And a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.